Mikes are on. Time having arrived, I call the meeting of the City Council to order for today, June 24th, 2019. It's approximately 7:07. Please stand and salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Counselors, just a quick note. I got a call from Counsel Sullivan and Counsel Lally. The two of them, although they're not together, but they're not going to be here together because of prior commitments, so we're going to be missing the two counselors. Mr. Clerk?
We have the acceptance, acceptance of the minutes of the May 28, 2019, City Council meeting.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
Acceptance of the minutes of the June 24, 2019, special City Council meeting.
That too shall be accepted and placed on file.
We have appointments. The appointment of Michael Livingston to the rank of Sergeant in the Brockton Police Department.
That will be referred to the Committee on Finance.
The appointment of David Farrell to the rank of Lieutenant in the Brockton Police Department.
That too shall be referred to the Committee on Finance.
We have the appointment of Peter Skelly as a special police officer of the City of Brockton for a one-year term ending January 2020.
Mr. President?
Counsel Falwell.
After the clerk reads these, I would move to take items five through 10 collectively to suspend the rules and act on them tonight.
Second. Motion has been properly made and properly second. All those in favor of suspending the rules and acting on it tonight, all those in favor, Mr. Clerk, please.
I'll take those collectively.
Collectively.
Okay. This is the appointment of special police officers of the City of Brockton for a term of one year ending 2020. Peter Skelly, Brian Larry, Scotty Aldman, John Laundgren, Robert Smith, Robert Sergio.
The question is on confirmation by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darncourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Falwell?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Mr. President? The appointment is confirmed. Counsel Falwell.
Mr. President, just before I move reconsideration in the hope that it does not prevail, may I have a moment of personal privilege?
Absolutely, sir.
We're very privileged tonight to have some experienced police officers from the Brockton Police Department who have offered many years of service to the residents and to the city. They will now become special police officers. They will be eligible to work details. This initiated through Counsel Ian Eary and a home rule petition, which was passed by the legislature, and this is really going to help the police department and our residents by having these additional personnel at a time when we need them. So, we certainly hope all of you remain safe, and we thank you for your willingness to come back and serve the residents of Brockton once again. And with that, I would move reconsideration in the hope that it does not prevail.
Second. Motion for reconsideration has been properly made in second. All those in favor of reconsideration? All those opposed? Reconsideration fails.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Yay!
Mr. President, the clerk has been kind enough to indicate that he can have the officers come up, administer the oath, and sign the book, and we'd like to let all of you know that's what will happen next.
I believe this is appropriate since this is the first time we're doing this. I think, since we're breaking some new ground here, I think it's appropriate for us to do that. So, gentlemen?
Nice.
You need my glasses?
Your glasses.
I mean, I gotta get a picture of the robes gallery here.
You should be in it with them.
That's right.
Everybody looks younger than me. That scares.
Everybody's younger than you.
Because they are.
Well, you're full of compliments tonight, sir.
You didn't buy last week. I'm mad.
Okay, would you raise your right hand? Insert your name after "I" and repeat after me. I solemnly swear that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will support the Constitution, dear Lord, so help me God. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a special police officer of the City of Brockton according to the best of my ability and understanding, agree with each of the rules and regulations of the Commonwealth, and the audiences of the City of Brockton, so help me God. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Can we just stand again? Or stand again?
Yeah, oh yeah. Oh yeah. Oh yeah. Oh yeah. That's...
That's great. Thank you. Good care.
How many pairs you got, Brian?
I got two.
You should start umpiring. You should umpire.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I have one waiting right for ya.
Lot of stories we could tell, gentlemen. Lot of stories. Not tonight.
We'll meet you at the bar after.
Yeah, and I was there today for that. She told... Let me close up the corners. Yeah, I wouldn't see.
Scott. Cardi, I've seen your picture.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
How many times does this make? Yeah?
Signed that book back in the 1800s. I noticed that little dust on that.
Thank you very much.
I wonder how that goes back. Goodness sake. Congratulations.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's...
Congratulations.
Oh, you're welcome. Congratulations, Ian. Usually they give us a recess. We go down there, congratulate them.
Want to give a little applause?
Congratulations.
Welcome. Congratulations, yes.
Counselors, if I could just have the family members who are here just to stand and be recognized, because I know that this is a family affair where some of you guys... It's a family affair, you know? The guys were all retired. Now they're back to doing some work, so thank you very much for doing this. With that, we're gonna take a quick recess, so if you folks... Next item on the agenda, Mr. Clerk.
We have the hearings of Liberty Acquisition Corp., DBA Copeland Volkswagen, 970 West Chestnut Street, Brockton, for transfer of garage license located at 122 Liberty Street, Brockton. Master current owner is Paul Clark, Inc., in City Clerk's office, April 24, 2019. Hearing is signed for June 24, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. All paperwork is on file, and the fire department has no objections.
Time having arrived, I declare this portion of the hearing open. Is anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone in favor? If you're in favor, please give your name to the clerk.
My name's Laura. Last name is Sishu, C-I-C-C-I-U.
Anything you want to say on your behalf, or...
No, we're just looking forward to keeping the business in Brockton and continuing with the good Copeland name.
Oh, great. Thank you. Is there anyone else here in favor of this petitioner? Petition? Going once? Going twice? I close that portion. Is there anyone here in opposition of this petition? Anyone in opposition? Going once? Twice? I declare that closed.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I just want to make one comment, and I think she mentioned it as well. You know, they're pleased to be able to stay here in the City of Brockton, which I think is the most, you know, positive thing that we could probably ask for. So, I welcome it now to be known as a Copeland Volkswagen. For many years, it was a Clark Volkswagen. It was built there some time ago for that purpose. So, appreciate the fact that you're going to be, you know, taking over the VW name there, and you're keeping everything in place and just the way it is. So, with that, I'd move that we approve this transfer this evening.
Second. Motion has been properly made in second. To grant, all those in favor granting? All those opposed? Motion granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, sir.
Liberty Acquisition Corp., DBA Copeland Volkswagen, 970 West Chestnut Street, Brockton, for transfer of motor vehicle repair mechanical license located at 122 Liberty Street, Brockton. Current owner is Paul Clark, Inc., in City Clerk's office, April 24, 2019. Hearing is signed for June 24, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. All paperwork on file. Fire Department has no objections.
Time having arrived, I declare this portion of the hearing open. Is anyone here in favor of this petition?
Yes, my name is Laura Sishu.
Anything else you want to add, or just the simple?
Same.
Same. Is there anyone else here in favor of this petition? Anyone else? Hearing none? I close that portion. Is there anyone here in opposition of this petition? Opposition? Going once? Twice? Three times?
Mr. President, I'd make a motion that we move to grant the license here the same this evening.
Second.
Thank you.
The motion has been properly made and properly second to grant the license. All those in favor of granting? All those opposed? Motion is granted. License is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Number 13, sir.
Of Compass Holden, Inc., 514 North Main Street, Brockton, for transfer of above-ground storage license located at 1126 North Montello Street, Brockton. The current owner is Alfred Colaruso, in City Clerk's office, May 8, 2019. Hearing is signed for June 24, 2019. All paperwork is on file, and the fire department has no objections.
Time having arrived, I declare this portion of the hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor of this petitioner? In favor of this petitioner?
Mr. President, I believe they're out in the hallway.
Oh, they are?
I saw Mr. Colaruso here earlier.
Okay, so, either they have to step in, or we're gonna have to gavel 'em. If you're here in favor of your petition, please step to the microphone and state your name to the clerk.
Good evening. Yaniv Sostiel.
And what are you planning to do with this? Can you give us a little...
It's a gas station that we bought, and I guess we're here to transfer the underground storage license.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in favor of this petition? This is in your word, Counselor. Are you in favor or against this?
Well, I'm in favor. This business belonged to the Colarussos, and this is a transfer of a license. They sold the business a while back, and I believe they're just doing some work to the station and renovating it and hopefully get it back up and running soon. So, I'm in support of this. I know that there's issues right now with some of the construction, but I wouldn't want to see that hold up their license.
Is there anyone else in favor? Hearing none? You're in favor, sir? Why don't you come up and state your name to the clerk, please?
Hi, Vincent Colaruso, 95 Wilder Street. I was the present owner of the AMS Gas. Been in the family for 80 years. It just got difficult to survive with all the competition, and I'm in favor of transferring to Yaniv.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here in favor? Hearing none? I close that portion. Is there anyone here in opposition of this petition? In opposition? Going once? Twice? Three times? I close that portion as well.
A motion to grant the underground license.
Second. A motion has been properly made in second to grant the transfer. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion granted. License is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Number 13, sir.
Of Compass Holden, Inc., 514 North Main Street, Brockton, for transfer of above-ground storage license located at 1126 North Montello Street, Brockton. The current owner is Alfred Colaruso, in City Clerk's office, May 8, 2019. Hearing is signed for June 24, 2019. All paperwork is on file, and the fire department has no objections.
Time having arrived, I declare this portion of the hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor of this petitioner? In favor of this petitioner?
Mr. President, I believe they're out in the hallway.
Oh, they are?
I saw Mr. Colaruso here earlier.
Okay, so, either they have to step in, or we're gonna have to gavel 'em. If you're here in favor of your petition, please step to the microphone and state your name to the clerk.
Good evening. Yaniv Sostiel.
And what are you planning to do with this? Can you give us a little...
It's a gas station that we bought, and I guess we're here to transfer the underground storage license.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in favor of this petition? This is in your word, Counselor. Are you in favor or against this?
Well, I'm in favor. This business belonged to the Colarussos, and this is a transfer of a license. They sold the business a while back, and I believe they're just doing some work to the station and renovating it and hopefully get it back up and running soon. So, I'm in support of this. I know that there's issues right now with some of the construction, but I wouldn't want to see that hold up their license.
Is there anyone else in favor? Hearing none? You're in favor, sir? Why don't you come up and state your name to the clerk, please?
Hi, Vincent Colaruso, 95 Wilder Street. I was the present owner of the AMS Gas. Been in the family for 80 years. It just got difficult to survive with all the competition, and I'm in favor of transferring to Yaniv.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here in favor? Hearing none? I close that portion. Is there anyone here in opposition of this petition? In opposition? Going once? Twice? Three times? I close that portion as well.
A motion to grant the underground license.
Second. A motion has been properly made in second to grant the transfer. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is granted. License is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Number 13, sir.
Of Compass Holden, Inc., 514 North Main Street, Brockton, for transfer of above-ground storage license located at 1126 North Montello Street, Brockton. The current owner is Alfred Colaruso, in City Clerk's office, May 8, 2019. Hearing is signed for June 24, 2019. All paperwork is on file, and the fire department has no objections.
Time having arrived, I declare this portion of the hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor of this petitioner? In favor of this petitioner? Mr. President, I believe they're out in the hallway. Oh, they are?
I saw Mr. Colaruso here earlier.
Okay, so, either they have to step in, or we're gonna have to gavel 'em. If you're here in favor of your petition, please step to the microphone and state your name to the clerk.
Good evening. Yaniv Sostiel.
And what are you planning to do with this? Can you give us a little...
It's a gas station that we bought, and I guess we're here to transfer the underground storage license.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in favor of this petition? In favor of this petitioner?
Mr. President, I believe they're out in the hallway.
Oh, they are?
I saw Mr. Colaruso here earlier.
Okay, so, either they have to step in, or we're gonna have to gavel 'em. If you're here in favor of your petition, please step to the microphone and state your name to the clerk.
Good evening. Yaniv Sostiel.
And what are you planning to do with this? Can you give us a little...
It's a gas station that we bought, and I guess we're here to transfer the underground storage license.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here in favor? Hearing none? I close that portion. Is there anyone here in opposition of this petition? In opposition? Going once? Twice? Three times? I close that portion as well.
A motion to grant the underground license.
Second. A motion has been properly made in second to grant the transfer. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion granted. License is granted.
Thank you. Good luck.
Next item, sir.
Liberty Acquisition Corp., DBA Copeland Volkswagen, 970 West Chestnut Street, Brockton, for transfer of motor vehicle repair mechanical license located at 122 Liberty Street, Brockton. Current owner is Paul Clark, Inc., in City Clerk's office, April 24, 2019. Hearing is signed for June 24, 2019. All paperwork is on file, and the fire department has no objections.
Time having arrived, I declare this portion of the hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor of this petitioner? In favor of this petitioner?
Mr. President, I believe they're out in the hallway.
Oh, they are?
I saw Mr. Colaruso here earlier.
Okay, so, either they have to step in, or we're gonna have to gavel 'em. If you're here in favor of your petition, please step to the microphone and state your name to the clerk.
Good evening. Yaniv Sostiel.
And what are you planning to do with this? Can you give us a little...
It's a gas station that we bought, and I guess we're here to transfer the underground storage license.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in favor of this petition? This is in your word, Counselor. Are you in favor or against this?
Well, I'm in favor. This business belonged to the Colarussos, and this is a transfer of a license. They sold the business a while back, and I believe they're just doing some work to the station and renovating it and hopefully get it back up and running soon. So, I'm in support of this. I know that there's issues right now with some of the construction, but I wouldn't want to see that hold up their license.
Is there anyone else in favor? Hearing none? You're in favor, sir? Why don't you come up and state your name to the clerk, please?
Hi, Vincent Colaruso, 95 Wilder Street. I was the present owner of the AMS Gas. Been in the family for 80 years. It just got difficult to survive with all the competition, and I'm in favor of transferring to Yaniv.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here in favor? Hearing none? I close that portion. Is there anyone here in opposition of this petition? In opposition? Going once? Twice? Three times? I close that portion as well.
A motion to grant the underground license.
Second. A motion has been properly made in second to grant the transfer. All those in favor? All those opposed? It shall be done. Thank you, sir.
We have the petition of Brian's Taxi, 20 Putnam Street, Brockton, for an increase of five additional vehicles to taxi licenses for a total of 12 taxis, in City Clerk's office, June 18, 2019. All paperwork is on file.
Yeah, my name is Brian Parker from Brian Taxi. Looking for five additional licenses. All the... The police has made out the proper inspections. They couldn't complete the inspection because I need the medallion. That's why I'm here. So, I believe it should go through tonight. He'll re-inspect them within this week, and I should be able to use my licenses. You know, do the Uber, being able to do whatever they want. We need to crack this problem, so if I need additional licenses, which I will in the winter, because it's our busy time, we need to figure this out. I'm paying $150 a day in insurance, sitting on the cabs, because I needed them to get inspected, so I need to be insured, sticker, everything else. So, they're sitting there. They've been sitting there for about 30 days. That's my case.
Is there anyone else here in favor of this petition?
Yes.
Name is Donald Kopp. Reside at 11th Skyview Drive in Brockton, and I do some driving for Brian Taxi. This taxi cab company is the only one left in Brockton, and I have a hunch that a lot of you are not aware of how important this cab company is to the infrastructure and the running of this city. They are the only mode of transportation that'll take cash. All the others, Uber, you know, these social media companies, you have to have a credit card. The company itself is under attack from social media. And the city is making it cumbersome to get a vehicle onto the road. I was shocked when I learned, you know, what they have to do to get a cab simply on the road, whereas the Uber-type companies can do it in two days. They also can charge whatever they want, and I'm sure you've heard the stories of how on one day the one ride costs one price, two days later it can be double that. In any event, you should be supporting a local business that's supporting this city and our residents. They employ... Well, they don't actually employ, but jobs are created for residents in this city. They pay taxes in this city, and they do an abundance of good, such as a free ride once in a while when someone doesn't have a penny in their pocket. They're also a backup to 911, believe it or not. They have a radio station on air 24/7 with a live person, not a machine, answering the phone all the time. You should be doing everything you can to support and to make sure that they survive. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in favor of this petitioner?
Yeah, Mr. President, I am also in favor of this petitioner in regard to the importance of, you know, having the only taxi company in the city. I myself had a conversation with Mr. Patman in regard to the responsibility of his company and giving the fact that, as we speak, this is the only taxi company that we have in the city. And I also spoke with him in regard to how they are the only, you know, cab driver, as we speak, in the city that actually take cash from them. So, I just had a conversation with the clerk in regard to the process about this. I was gonna make a motion to grant it tonight, but I think the clerk said that there's one step to go before they can finalize it. So, I would like to see all my colleagues support this, because I think it is very important. As we speak, if you go to by the Brockton Neighborhood Health Center and also on Legend Parkway, you will see some of his cars out there, and I think it's not enough, given the amount of cars they are receiving. I myself went to his business recently to sort of like take a look at the traffic that was going there, and as we speak, they do not have the capacity to satisfy it. I understand we have to follow all the process, but according to Mr. Patman, it seems like he already went to the Brockton Police Department to do what he had to do, but I think the clerk said that there's one step to go, and I think once we reach that step, hopefully all of my colleagues will support this petition. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Nakashima.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening. I just wanted to speak in support of this as well. I was recently made aware of the fact that this is the last taxi cab company in Brockton. They do a lot of good for the city and for the residents of the city, and I support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors, I'm looking for a...
I make a motion that we approve for them this evening.
You haven't finished the hearing? It wasn't a public hearing, so...
There's a question.
It was just a petition.
It's a petition.
Question here will be on granting after both sides.
Right. Is there anyone here that opposes to this petition?
Excuse me? What did you say?
What was that?
I didn't hear what...
No, he says we gotta go through this parliamentary procedure here in order to get to that granting piece. Is there anyone here in opposition to this?
I didn't hear what...
No, he says we gotta go through this parliamentary procedure here in order to get to that granting piece. Is there anyone here in opposition to this? Hearing none? We'll close that portion.
Question's on grant.
Question is on granting. All those in favor of granting?
Aye.
All those opposed? License is granted, sir. Good luck.
We have the report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of June 17, 2019.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Police Chief requesting the City Council authorize the total appropriation of $180,000 from Police Department Personal Services, non-overtime, to Police Department Capital. The additional funds will be used for the department to replace the roof at the Police Department.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
That too shall be accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
And a communication from the Brockton Library Director requesting the City Council authorizes the acceptance and expenditures for the total grant funds and the amount of $50,000 from the Commonwealth of Mass. Department of Mass. Marketing Partnership Grant to Brockton Public Library Mass. Marketing Partnership Grant Fund. These grant funds will be used for an illuminated sign on the corner of White Avenue and Main Street. The sign will officially name the main branch of the Brockton Library, Thomas P. Kennedy Main Branch, Brockton Public Library, in honor of the late Senator Thomas P. Kennedy.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
That too shall be accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Plymouth County Treasurer's Office requesting the City Council authorize the approval of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20, as amended by Chapter 218, Section 15 of the Acts of 2016, and further authorize the participation in the Plymouth County Trust Program.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
From the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the CFO relative to the same.
And that too shall be accepted and placed on file.
We have the appointment of Captain Antaziev, 5 Tarkin Hill Lane, Bridge Water Mass. As a Constable of the City of Brockton for a term of three years, in council, May 28, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on confirmation by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
The appointment is confirmed.
Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the City of Brockton require the layout and acceptance of Cottage Grove Avenue extending from the end of the 1967 layout at Woodard Avenue, southerly, a distance of about 322.27 feet, more or less. And for that purpose, it is necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street all way of said City of Brockton. End council, March 11, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance and Planning. Those reports were favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the City of Brockton require the layout and acceptance of Alexandra's Way extending from West Chestnut Street southerly, a distance of 765.71 feet, more or less. And for that purpose, it is necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said City of Brockton. End council, March 25, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance and Planning. Those reports were favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the City of Brockton require the layout and acceptance of Rachel's Way extending from Alagrande's Way, southwesterly and southeasterly, a distance of 647.28 feet, more or less, to Alagrande's Way. And for that purpose, it is necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street all way of said City of Brockton. End council, March 25, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance and Planning. Those reports were favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Order that the common necessity and the convenience of the inhabitants of the City of Brockton require the layout and acceptance of Cypress Drive extending from Rockland Street easterly and naughtily, a distance of about 1,402 feet, more or less. And for that purpose, it is necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said City of Brockton. End council, March 25, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance and Planning. Those reports were favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the City of Brockton require the layout and acceptance of Rock Meadow Drive extending from Rockland Street easterly, a distance of about 1,200 feet, more or less, and from Rock Meadow Drive naughtily, a distance of about 310 feet, more or less. And for that purpose, it is necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street all way of said City of Brockton. End council, April 8, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance and Planning. Those reports were favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Order acceptance and expenditures of the total grant funds, any amount of $77,603 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, 2018 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, to Brockton Police Department, 2018 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, JAG Fund. End council, May 28, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Order acceptance and expenditures of the total grant funds, any amount of $80,433 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, to Brockton Police Department, 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, JAG Fund. End council, May 28, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Transfer of $125,000 from Treasurer's Debt Interest Short Term Notes to Treasurer's Medicare Tax, End Council, May 28, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
An order to amend any revised auditors of the City of Brockton, Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6-2, composition of Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6-2, and the revised auditors of the City of Brockton be amended to increase the number of Fire Department captains by one from 17 to 18 for a limited period of time, subject to a sunset clause.
This will be referred to the Committee on Ordinance.
An order to amend any Chapter 27 of the revised auditors of the City of Brockton be ordained by the City Council as follows. Chapter 27 of the revised auditors of the City of Brockton hereby amended by amending the zoning district map in the vicinity of the naughtily side of Belmont Street, westerly side of Pearl Street, and the northeasterly side of Stowed Hill Street. Said proposed change to be from R-1 Zone, single-family residential zone, to C-5 Zone, office zones.
This will be referred to the Committee on Ordinance and Planning.
An order to amend any Chapter 1 of the revised auditors, Chapter 15, Article 2, Section 15-222 of the revised auditors is hereby amended relative to the Superintendent of Parks.
Refer to the Committee on Ordinance.
An order to amend any Chapter 1 of the revised auditors, Chapter 2, Article 4, Section 2-296 of the revised auditors is hereby amended relative to the Chief Financial Officer.
That too will be referred to the Committee on Ordinance.
An order to amend any Chapter 1 of the revised auditors, Chapter 2, Article 1, Section 2-9 of the revised auditors is hereby amended relative to the Executive Director of Election Commission.
That too shall be referred to the Committee on Ordinance.
An order to amend any Chapter 1 of the revised auditors, Chapter 19, Article 2, Section 19-21 of the revised auditors is hereby amended relative to the Police Chief.
That too will be referred to the Committee on Ordinance.
Order that the zoning request change from the industrial commercial for the property map on East Dashen Street previously voted on by the Planning Board and forwarded to the City Clerk and City Council. The proposed amendment that the following parcels be included in a proposed change, 161-094, 161-096, 161-097, 161-097R, 161-098, and 161-113. The addition of these properties will protect the existing residential zones from the possibility of any future expanded industrial uses.
This will be referred to the Committee on Ordinance.
Order in accordance with the Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, that the City Council authorizes the approval of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20, as amended by Chapter 218, Section 15 of the Acts of 2016, and further authorize the participation in the Plymouth County Trust Program.
Refer to the Committee on Finance.
Total appropriation of $180,000 from Police Department Personal Services, non-overtime, to Police Department Capital.
Mr. President?
Counselor Farwell.
I'd like to move that we suspend the rules and act on this tonight and speak in the motion.
Second.
A motion has been properly made in second to suspend the rules and act on this tonight. All those in favor suspending the rules? All those opposed? We shall do that, Counselor.
Mr. President and colleagues, back in December, we appropriated some money to repair the roof at the police station. The work is more extensive than we thought. They need some additional funding. And rather than have this go to FinCom and then come back to the council in August, I think it's prudent we pass this tonight so they can get started on the work and get it done before fall and make sure that the police department building is as watertight as it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? The question will be on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative?
The appropriation is affirmed.
Mr. President, I move reconsideration in the hope that it does not prevail.
Second.
A motion for reconsideration has been properly made in second. All those in favor reconsideration? All those opposed? It does not carry.
Total grant funds, an amount of $50,000 from the Commonwealth of Mass. Department of Massachusetts Marketing, I'm sorry, yeah, Marketing Partnership Grant to Brockton Public Library Mass. Marketing Partnership Grant Fund.
I'm gonna get a whiplash, so who stood up first?
Let the old man know.
Go ahead, you make your motion.
Counselor Beauregard.
Okay, we want to take this under the suspension of rules because this is 2019 appropriation for the $50,000 for the library.
Is that in a form of a motion?
Yes, that is.
Second.